I have to call the meeting, the regular meeting that we started with supervisors for Tuesday, November 25th, 2022.
What do you think?
The United States of America, and to the Republic of California, is one nation under God, invisible, liberty, and justice for all.
All right. All of us are with the chief.
Phil Palaskey, Chief Place.
Krista Hyrum, Township Director.
Kim Sullivan, Director of Engineering Services.
Dave Criss, Director of Finance.
Jeff Winabottom, Assistant Manager.
Bob Artson, Atlanta.
Sean O'Kenny, Township Solicitor.
Supervisor Dennis T. Cantone.
Supervisor Kevin McDevitt.
Vice Chair General Winder.
Chairman DuBass. Okay, next and first on our agenda here is a swearing in of our latest detective, Chairman Winder. We've been gathering a lot lately for this kind of promotion and things, and we're going to see who's the force here to support him. And we'll have a swearing in, so if you guys want to come forward. Don Ben will do the swear in.
Jared, you have the detective hold by.
Please repeat after me. I say your name, having been appointed as detective in and for the Township of East Norton.
Detective in and for the Township of East Norton.
solemnly swear or affirm
Solemnly swear or affirm.
that I will obey,
That I will obey.
support,
Support.
understand
Understand.
the Constitution of the United States,
Constitution of the United States.
the Pennsylvania Constitution,
the Pennsylvania Constitution.
the laws of Pennsylvania,
the laws of Pennsylvania.
and the laws and ordinances of East Norton Township.
Laws and ordinances of East Norton Township.
and that I will faithfully carry out my duties
Faithfully carry out my duties.
a detective with fidelity.
A detective with fidelity.
furthermore,
Furthermore.
I will uphold,
I will uphold.
obey,
obey.
and enforce
and enforce.
without consideration
without consideration.
to a person's race,
to a person's race.
home,
sex,
sex. religious creed,
religious creed.
sexual orientation,
sexual orientation.
age,
age.
national origin,
national origin.
almost finished.
ancestry,
ancestry. handicap
handicap.
or disability,
or disability.
congratulations, Detective.
Okay, so Jared, congratulations. We're all here to celebrate a great cop becoming a great detective. So we even have the walking wounded of the East Norton Township Police Department here, and that just goes to show you what Jared is made of and what all of you folks are made of to come here and celebrate this. So Jared became a cop in 2010, came to us here in East Norton in 2020. Very active police officer who understood that proactive, fair policing is what keeps a place safe. Law enforcement is what keeps a community safe. So Jared earned the right to join the Quality of Life Unit within a short period of time, two months. Detective Mike Hendricks retired. Jared had a big, big set of shoes to step into, and boy, did he step into them. So Jared did an absolutely unbelievable job since that point in time. Sixty-five arrests, including an arrest in a pattern catalytic converter theft ring, which obviously everybody here in the Commonwealth understands what a problem that is. A motor vehicle theft ring, stolen motor vehicle ring, and theft of motor vehicle ring, selling drugs to children, and selling drugs in the hospital. Those are just some of the arrests that Jared's made. In addition to that, he worked very, very closely with Montgomery County District Attorney's Office on some really huge cases, including putting the cuffs on a murder from Philadelphia. So Jared has really proven himself to be an asset to this community. So through his enthusiasm, his dedication, and his devotion to duty, he has kept his community safe. And equally important, he has allowed the people in this community to feel safe. So Jared, outstanding job. And most importantly, Jared and I were speaking before this, that he's only one part of the team. I'm only one part of the team. That's the team out there. So everybody in the audience, if you turn around, that is the team that keeps you safe. We're simply pieces in this public safety puzzle. So thank all of you for everything you do.
All right, real quick. Sam, real quick, real quick. All right.
I want to thank the chief and the whole board for the opportunity to keep working hard for everybody in the township. So thank you. All right. I want to thank my wife, all right, and my family, my kids, who are very supportive. This job can be very stressful, and I'm taking this home every night, trying to bring a job home and stuff like that, but she's amazing. She's my rock. Sergeant Brannan, thank you. Best supervisor I've ever had in my whole entire career. All right. Mentor, coach, supervisor. He lets me be me and doesn't try to take me out of that, which is amazing. So thank you, sir. Thank you. My squad, you guys are amazing. Soto, thank you. You guys are incredible. All my coworkers. We're a giant team. None of these jobs can happen without you guys. I love you guys. All right, all we have is each other, so let's stay together. All right, thank you, guys. You guys are amazing. All right. Last thing. Like the chief said, we walked into this spot, we hit the ground running. All right, and I really need to thank the Montgomery County Detective Bureau, Norristown Police Department, Plymouth Police Department, Whip Haven Police Department, Lower Province Police Department, West Norton Police Department, Upper Marion Police Department, all their detective squads stepped up and mentored all of us and took us in and allowed us and helped us solve the cases for our township. So we owe those guys a lot, too. So thank you. All right, last but not least, my personal police mentors are here tonight. You saw Detective Pete Sarus, who is up here, Bucks County Detective, Detective Irvin Malone, who used to be a Montgomery County Detective, the National Bucks County Detective, and Jared Eisenhower, who's not here either. All right, those guys are my police mentors that got me started in this, and it's special that we're all here together. All right, so thank you, everybody, and I'll keep working hard for all of you.
All right, Jared, this is your night.
You just gotta go home and babysit.
Take care of everyone.
Thanks, guys. Be safe.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you.
Motion to adjourn. We're not quite here yet.
Okay.
Keep that in mind. All right, well, we're going to move along here. We have a public hearing tonight for Reyes Tecca of East Norton, that's not a business of a person, Reyes Tecca of East Norton, for liquor license transfer. And for this, we have it out of public opinion, a public opinion, it's a plea of intermunity. So first thing we'll do is I'll make a motion to have this public hearing.
I'll put that in the form of a.
A motion by Detective. They got detectives on the line. By Supervisor Lucina.
I'll second that.
Detective Supervisor Devitt, in favor?
Aye.
Okay. I will now turn the hearing over to our Solicitor, Mr. Cruz.
Thank you very much, Chairman Vans. What I'm going to do is mark some exhibits for record, just so they're in the record. One has a copy of the legal notice about this restaurant liquor license transfer to 79 East German Town Pike at H. Morton that ran the Times Herald, or newspaper of general circulation, on 10/11 and on 10/18, twice as required. That will be marked as T1. T2 will be a copy of this liquor license transfer and an application due August 30 of 2022, signed by Matthew Goldstein, which gives some of the requirements and some basis for this liquor license transfer. And then T3, which will also be under new business, which is Resolution 2866, is a copy of the Resolution appropriating this, if that's what the warrant of supervisors chooses to do. What will happen is that really there'll be a brief explanation from the applicant's attorney here, an opportunity for board supervisors questions, an opportunity for public comment. Then the board can either continue the hearing until a later date or close the hearing and then take action on the Resolution 2866. So I'll turn it over to the applicant's attorney.
Good evening, members of the board, and Solicitor Phil Kenny. My name is Matthew Goldstein. I am here representing Reyes Tecca of East Norton Incorporated. The applicants who are in the useful transfer of restaurant license R16115, coming from Harrington Township to a location at 79 East German Town Pike here in East Norton. This public hearing is required pursuant to Section 461(c)(3) of the Liquor Code, and it is dual purpose. One is to allow the board supervisors to ask questions, also to allow the public to ask questions, so that all the parties involved can assess whether or not our application would be detrimental to the health and welfare morals of the township and its residents. It is our position, based on our application and on the testimony that we're giving tonight, that our application would not be detrimental to the health and welfare of the community of the township and its residents, and we would request that the board approve our application. With me here tonight are Gustavo and Jenny Palacios. They together are owners of, I believe, seven restaurant liquor license companies, restaurants in Pennsylvania, so they're not new to this. They're familiar with the RAM requirements of the Liquor Code, which is responsible alcohol management program. And from this specific location, Mr. Palacios and his daughter Jenny are here to answer questions you have, whether it be hours of operation, live entertainment versus no live entertainment, takeout beer versus no takeout beer. You can ask those questions directly, or if you'd like me to kind of walk them through some of the basic questions, I can do that as well.
I think it might be easier for you to just walk them through. That might just preempt it and save the whole time.
Okay, great. Gustavo, Jenny.
Do you want to swear to any witnesses, or it's up to you?
I, Gustavo doesn't speak English.
Oh, okay.
So Jenny's going to be contributing for him. Gustavo is one of the principals of the applicant. The questions that I would have would be, Gustavo, how many restaurants do you own in common with Pennsylvania?
Eight.
Eight. And how long is, how long has it been you own one? How did you start?
It's been a business since 1995.
1995. And you have restaurants with liquor licenses?
Yes.
And at this particular location, approximately, how many seats or boundaries do you have?
We have about fifty seats, yes.
And what are your hours of operation?
It's going to be eleven to ten, Monday to Sunday.
And do you typically sell takeout beer?
Really? If a customer asks for a takeout, we take out, but it's round display as much for takeout beer.
So you don't have a case for takeout beer? No. No takeout?
No.
How about dancing? Any dancing?
No, no dancing.
How about live entertainment?
Yes, we have, we'll have mariachi and ontemo.
Ontemo. So it's not very well?
No, not very well.
And are you grandfriended?
Yes, I am personally grandfriended.
And is your father grandfriended?
Yes.
That's probably the basics.
The board may have some questions.
Any questions for the board?
I do, Mr. Chairman, I do, my. Hi, I'm Dennis T. Cantone, I'm with the board supervisors, also a bartender. Not that I'm looking for a job. Will there be a bar in the restaurant?
Yes, there'll be a bar.
How many seats in the bar?
Ah, it's about thirteen.
Okay. And the bar's going to close at 10 o'clock?
Yes, it's just, yeah, it'll close as well.
And your other restaurants, what's the, what's the ratio of RAM certified people who are serving the alcohol?
It has to be about fifty percent. All, all the ways that have, they have to have RAM. You can't let them serve alcohol off of RAM.
For those of you who don't know the RAM certification requirements, it's, of course, the app that goes for, like, a control board, and it scares you, it really kind of scares you, and it's gonna be like, no, this is my responsibility. So that's great. Welcome to the township. I think that you're welcome to the township.
Well, thank you. I'm very excited to be here. Thanks.
Any other questions? Questions?
I just want to know about the dates they were.
Well, I just want to echo Mr. C. N.'s comments about welcome to the township and good luck with it.
Thank you.
Chairman Vans, just see if there's any evidence. The board's finished, just see if there's any public comment before we close the hearing.
Any public comment on that? Anyone online? Okay. Hearing done, and I will make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Second by Vice Chair Winder. All favor?
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. Okay, moving on, I want to ask that the board met executive session prior to this meeting tonight to discuss matters of personnel negotiation. All right, I will make a motion then to approve the meeting minutes from our firing meeting in September, September 27th, regular meeting. Do I have a second for that?
I'll second that.
Second by Vice Chair Winder. All favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right, citizens to be heard. Anyone at this point? You can come up over here to the mic and give us your name and address, please.
Okay. Hi. My name is Always. This is my sister Rob, and I live at 220 Orchard Lane, and my sister lives at 2906 W Creek. And we came before you all today, I'm sorry, I don't know the protocol in terms of saying hello to everyone. Thank you, okay. We came before you all today because we wanted to talk about Aqua wastewater. We're having a problem with them. They have gone up on our rate by seventy-two point fifty-five percent, which means that they now charge more for us to run water down the drain than Pennsylvania American Water charters to send water into our homes. So at this point, our board went from twenty-one dollars and eight cents to thirty-five dollars and fifty-seven cents. That's their base fee, just to say that you have sewer service with them. We've spoken with them, my sister and I have spoken with them, the residents of East Norton have spoken with them, and their response is always the same. It's either that the PUC has approved their increase, or there's nothing that they can do, because this is what they've done already, which is to increase the rate on all of us in East Norton. Because the seventy-two point fifty-five percent, that's an increase for East Norton. So at this point, we've spoken with the Public Utility Commission. They said, yes, they did approve this. They did not say that they approved seventy-two point fifty-five percent. They just said that they approved the increase that Aqua requested. I've spoken with just about 100 of our neighbors at this point. We've been going around with the petition, literally knocking on everybody's door. And no one that we have spoken with has noticed from Aqua that said that they were going to go up by seventy-two point fifty-five percent on the residents of East Norton. When we spoke with Aqua about the fact that we have no one that we've spoken with that was aware of their increase, again, their response was the PUC approved it. At this point, what we're asking, what we would like to respectfully ask of you all is if you all would consider looking for another wastewater system for the township of East Norton. It's very obvious that Aqua cannot be trusted. They're not truthful when it comes to the information that they're giving to the PUC. My sister and I have, we have requested a hearing with the PUC against Aqua at this point. And the neighbors that we've talked with thus far, everyone feels the same. We need Aqua out. Aqua is not trustworthy when it comes to what they're going to provide for us as a township. So we would like to respectfully request that you all look to find us another wastewater system.
Okay, well, thank you for putting just a thanks on that. And we are also residents and homeowners, so we're here to help in too, paying these higher sewer bills. But I want to throw it over to our township manager, Mr. Hart, who has been involved in this, and give us a little more detail of what's happening here.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate everything you said. We have been working internally with, dealing with those exact concerns. Our finance director has met with a dozen residents and gone through their bills with them in great detail. You are correct that we can, and we've been working very, very, very closely with this, and we actually, prior to coming out here in executive session, the board has directed township staff and the solicitor to open up some interactions with the PUC on this issue. Because even in the PUC's declaration, they're tariffs. They don't say anything about seventy-two percent. They go anywhere generally from a forty-six to a fifty-one percent, nowhere near seventy-two percent. That's a concern for us, as well as you, because we've heard from it. I hear from our boards to say, my bill isn't quite the way our legal documents from Aqua say they are supposed to be. So tonight, I got, I asked for authorization to have our solicitor go and open up those meetings. So we, I can say I would like to have your information, because if there's a hearing, it'd be great for the township to partner with township residents, everybody together on this, because there truly is a discrepancy on what they're, they publicly said their rate increase would be and what people are seeing on their bills. So you're a thousand percent correct. I briefed everyone in very, very detail, so they knew coming out. It's exactly what you said, it's exactly correct. I can tell you, if you provide, before you leave, if you can provide your contact information, we will keep you in the loop, because Solicitor Kenny, his office is going to open up this line of inquiry with them, because we need, we need explanations, we need, if you screw it up, you need to tell us, and you need to fix it. We just don't know yet where they are, but we know the discrepancy like you do. It's indisputable, there's, it doesn't make sense for us. So if you would leave us that information, we'd be glad to keep you in the loop and work in conjunction with you.
Okay. I want to make sure that I'm clear on what you're saying.
Okay.
You're saying that you would be willing to go to the PUC with us?
I'll go with you.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll go with you.
That is, okay. Absolutely. We are absolutely, we are absolutely going to the PUC.
Okay.
To be honest with you, if you weren't here to, we're going to the PUC, because in executive session, we discussed it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, this is wonderful.
We need more information on it, because, again, I don't want to rehash sort of the past. The township had aging infrastructure, and truly, if we kept it, we were going to have to raise it fifty-seven percent. The reason we sold it is because they could do it cheaper and have less of an increase. What happens when they come out, and it's not that, and you see on your bill a seventy-plus percent, that doesn't make sense, that doesn't, that doesn't correspond and coincide with the documentation from the legal, legal documents. So we have authorized, Solicitor Board has authorized, Solicitor to address this and find out, really, we're fact finding, and all of, we're keeping all of our options open. I can tell you that the board has assured me, whatever our options are, whether they, this resolves quickly, or we have to, everything's on the table for, for us, and we're, we're going to look into it and come back with more information. So truly, if you could leave us your, before you leave, your contact information, we'll keep you in the loop.
Fabulous. Thank you so very much. Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you.
Thank you for taking the lead in this.
Thank you.
We will be with you at the PUC hearings.
I'm so sorry.
We will be with you at the PUC, too. We will follow you.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Peter Batchmore from Willistown Township, Chester County, where we are fighting Aqua right now. And I want to meet with you, because we are part of a thousand, thousand residents in Willistown trying to stop the sale. We are second generation. You were the first generation of five townships that were sold. And I just wanted to say, if you want to meet New Garden, New Garden is in the same place, they are now having investigations in the history of how Aqua got here and how the rates have gone over a hundred percent. I was simply saying, if you want to meet with New Garden, and I want to meet with you later, you are part of something bigger all over Pennsylvania. So I just, I came over here because I wanted to meet you later.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you for those answers.
Thanks.
I'm sure they'll, they'll be talking. All right, any other citizens to be heard? Don.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Don Ben, 2502 Vincent Way. Here tonight, wearing at least three hats, if I can think of right now. Number one, as the chairperson of the Heroes Dinner at the Charity Lodge of the Missions Spurs every year, I want to thank Chief Palaskey and the officers of the East Norton Police Department for attending, embracing us with your presence. It meant a lot to all of us, and I hope it'll be back next year. We'll be better. It was pretty good this year. Number two, as East Norton's newly elected constable, I meet with my counterparts in Harrisburg on Zoom every month. I want to say the East Norton Township is the only township in the Commonwealth where constables swear on police officers. That is a unique honor. We can use it in a trivia night somewhere, if there's a contest. Also, I had a Zoom meeting earlier this week, which was yesterday, with the FBI regarding election night security. There are no problems up here. There are zero reported problems, no chatter, no nothing, at least that they shared with me. Maybe you know something I don't, but elections this year should be safe and secure as always. And last, as the chairperson of the East Norton Municipal Relations Commission, I'm here tonight with my co-chair, Deborah Killian York. All right, to announce that we'll have at least two vacancies next year on the board. Our commission will be looking for two qualified people, hopefully just one, but probably two. Also, the commission is working on a township protocol. We're getting submissions a lot slower than we wish we would. Please, if you have a recipe, send it in. We're going to push this through New Year's Eve, and if we don't have enough, we'll have to delay it, hoping that it'll be go early in January. And with that, I thank you.
Thank you, Don. Appreciate your hard work for the township. Any other citizens to be heard? Comments by the board of the board?
I just have one. I don't know if residents of the township or anyone watching online know, but there's a blood drive every year in East Norton Township the day before Thanksgiving. Bobby Nadalini was a resident of East Norton Township. He died two months shy of his 18th birthday of cancer, excuse me. And every year, his family hosts this blood drive at St. Titus the day before Thanksgiving. The reason that they, I'm reading from the letter to the family evening, Bobby received multiple blood transfusions. The blood he received from anonymous donors granted him more time with family and friends during his three-year battle with his disease. He had bone cancer, I'm sorry. Bobby passed away in 2002, just two months prior to his 18th birthday. For the past 18 years, or now more, the Nadalini family has been hosting a blood drive in honor of Bobby the day before Thanksgiving. Last year, they turned in 117 quarts of blood. So for those of you who are watching and those of you who are sitting here, please tell five people to donate blood the day before Thanksgiving, go to St. Titus and give blood, because you don't know who, who you're giving more time to, and it's precious. And Bobby Nadalini has been gone now for more than 20 years, and, or 20 years, I guess this year. We have to remember that he was a person. We have to remember that he was a person and he mattered and he was a part of our community. And we can't let his family, we can't let his family down and let, let his memory fade. So had the St. Titus the day before Thanksgiving, apparently the Nadalini family puts out a big spread of food. So it's not just a drink and an orange juice, you actually get fed. So that's my piece. Thank you so much, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. And thank you for bringing that up. Certainly, it's a worthy cause. Sounds like the timing could be a little better. You've got to eat heavy on Wednesday and then Thursday, of course, you know, what do you got to eat every day or two, so.
I think you can do it, Joe.
My nutritionist would disagree. But thanks for those comments. I think it was important.
Yeah, just a couple of comments for me. One, nice to see business, a new restaurant in East Norrington Township. I'm always looking for places that are not chains to go to. So welcome to the neighborhood, as Supervisor DeSanto shared. It's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. I know breast cancer has probably affected many of our residents in East Norrington Township. So for those that have lost family members and those still fighting and those who have been cured for breast cancer, we honor you this month. And then also, is it October? It's October. October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. So, you know, domestic violence hits many households, many families. So just want to be thoughtful of those that have experienced domestic violence in their homes and that we have a number of resources available and supports in our township and our county for those that experience that domestic violence. So just, just a couple of my comments.
Okay, thank you. Mr. With the, the comment, okay, I just have one. And it relates back to Saturday night. We had an event here in front of the township building called the Bootastic Drive Thru. It was a tremendous success. We had, it was supposed to be a six-thirty to eight PM thing, and I think we ran until almost nine o'clock, right, Mr. Hore? We gave out a lot of candy and I just want to thank the Parks and Rec Department, the Police Department, our public works and, and our staff here and Mr. Hore staff. We had a tremendous night. It was great. We, we had, everybody was happy, you know, usually please everybody. So, you know, it was a great night and I think kudos to all those who put it together. And, and just to, so you know, as you're driving out tonight, you'll see some ghouls and goblins out there, they're going to be waiting to you, there's witches down there, I think there are the Sanderson sisters out there that are talking. So that, that will be on display until next week sometime right after Halloween. Okay, all right. Moving on to old business. Resolution number twenty-six eighty-six, Ray Azteca of East Norrington Liquor License Transfer. Of course, this was the subject of our public hearing earlier tonight. So I was to call in on my office Solicitor Sean Philcany to review this resolution.
Sure. So as you heard, there was a discussion of the liquor license transfer, number one-six-one-one-five into East Norrington Township from Abingdon Township by Ray Azteca. There were obviously a series of questions that were answered by the board supervisors. What you have before you approving this, approving this transfer is in good format. It's been reviewed by my office, will be accepted by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board. So if the board finds it appropriate, you should take action on this resolution.
Okay. Any comments behind the board, questions? Okay, here we go. I will call for a motion then to approve Resolution twenty-six eighty-six, which grants Ray Azteca of East Norrington Inc. the liquor license transfer. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Vice Chair Wyner. I'll read it.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Congratulations.
Appreciate it.
Would you please?
You're going to stay the whole time.
I hope to see you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The bar opens all ten tonight.
Oh, no. Sorry, because of that. All right. Item B, Pearson Modern Business Project, I would like to call on our Director of Engineering Services, Jim Sol, to relieve the cycle.
Thank you, Vice Chair Wyner. A bid opening for this project was held on August twenty-ninth. Bids ranging from three hundred and seventy thousand to six hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars. The first two bidders were determined to be unresponsive because they cannot meet all township requirements. The lowest responsive bid was four hundred and seventy-one thousand, two hundred and forty dollars and zero cents. Since we have a grant for two hundred and three thousand dollars, it seems that we're not in a position to make this project forward at this time. It is our recommendation that board supervisors vote to reject these all bids. And our project engineer is looking for further sources of funding to make this project viable in open and near future.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Sol. Any comments, questions, or questions? All right, here we go. I will make a motion to vote to reject all the bids and we'll start over again. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second, Mr. Rossby-Davidson, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Authorize, new business, authorize the sale of township vehicles through municipal. We call on Chief Pulaski to review the item.
Thank you all. Requesting the board supervisors to give permission, pass a resolution to sell two police vehicles through municipal auction site. The vehicles are both older vehicles with high mileage and high repair costs. They've been stripped, both vehicles have been stripped of the police equipment and decals. Two new vehicles have been purchased to replace these vehicles. The two vehicles I'm requesting to sell are as follows. A twenty-eleven Ford Crown Victoria with a hundred and fifty-three thousand, one hundred and thirty-eight miles. Vehicle runs and drives, but is currently in need of an engine, a whole new exhaust system and interior repairs. The Kelley Blue Book resale value of the vehicle in fair condition is currently thirty-one hundred and five dollars. So you can see that the cost of repairs way, way exceeds the value of that vehicle. Second vehicle is a twenty-thirteen Dodge Charger, one hundred and forty-four thousand, eight hundred and forty miles. This vehicle also runs and drives, but currently in need of an engine, extensive bodywork and interior repairs. Kelley Blue Book sale, sorry, resale value of this vehicle in fair condition is forty-five hundred and seven dollars. So once again, cost of repairs far exceeds the value of the vehicle.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
We never make these things sound good. These are fine pieces of equipment we're calling here.
Well, twenty-eleven certainly, twenty-eleven certainly was, twenty thirteen too, but.
Sure. No, I'm good, thanks.
If you want, we give you a ride home while I'm driving.
Take it for a test drive. All right, well, then I'm going to make a motion to approve the sale of those two vehicles. Chief, explain your detail through the municipal process. Do I have a second?
A second.
Second by supervisor Sandow, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item B, affirm the appointment of a municipal emergency management coordinator. I'd like to call on our township manager, Mr. Robert Hart.
Thank you, Supervisor McGee. The action before you was really a housekeeping item. Our municipal emergency management coordinator was Brian Sharver, who has, is no longer employed with the township. In, in his place, Director of Fire Services, Eric Myers, has been performing that role. And this is the role of emergency management coordinator. However, we need an official appointment that has to be sent to the state. So even though he's doing the job, this is what is required to really codify it. So it's really just a asking you issue to appoint Eric Myers as the township's emergency management coordinator.
Comments, questions? Okay, I will put in the form of a motion to affirm the appointment of Eric Myers as our municipal emergency management coordinator. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Vice Chair Wyner, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, item C, approve the inspection service agreement with United Inspection Agency. Again, I'm calling our township manager, Mr. Hart.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before you tonight is a, is authorization to appoint or the appointment of a electrical inspection company. For the last several years, we have used RVE to do our residential and commercial electrical inspections. Now, RVE did be, did be residential. They subbed out the commercial to United Inspection, who's on here now, tonight. The RVE who did the inspection, who had, we had a contract with, informed us that their inspector was retired, they were not replacing him, so they were not going to be able to perform that service for us. That being said, there's some who was already doing commercial for us, gave us a better price than we were getting prior. So it seemed a logical transition to move and to, excuse me, to contract with United directly. It's, they're familiar with our staff, they're familiar with our preceding process of procedures. It just seems to be, excuse me, the obvious decision to have to forward it. Sorry, thank you.
You all choked up a bit. I have no idea about it. Sorry. Any questions or comments? Okay, I'm hearing that. I'll put a motion on the table to approve the service agreement with United Inspection Agency. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second by supervisor McDavid, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item D, East Norrington Township preliminary twenty-twenty-three budget presentation. I'd like to call on our Finance Director, David Criss, for, to review this item, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Wes Shoner. And I understand Mr. Hart got you choked up over the anticipation of this budget presentation. Forget about liquor licenses, this is where it's all.
Yeah, I was super excited.
So tonight before you is the proposed twenty-twenty-three budget for East Norrington Township. And just so, as a reminder about how this process works, tonight is the initial budget presentation. It's brief, it's highlights, it starts the process. The goal tonight is to go through the presentation and then get your authorization to have the time for the proposed budget. Once that's done, then we start the internal conversations between management departments and board supervisors. We'll have a second budget presentation on November fifteenth. And then at the December meeting, December thirteenth, we'll have our third budget presentation and everything goes well, the board will adopt the budget and fix the tax rate for the next year. Each year when we start the budgeting process, we establish goals that we want to achieve. And this year, the goals are actually the same ones we've had for the last several years. Our goals are to minimize, but ideally have no tax increase if we can, minimize the use of our reserves in balancing our budgets, be good stewards of our township financial resources, and equally important, enhance the township for its residents and visitors. So we have more restaurants we want to come into the township for our residents to enjoy. Part of this process is to talk a little bit about twenty-twenty-two and what's taking place. And in development highlights for twenty-twenty-two, you've seen the Metaplex Building going up at three-seventeen Germantown Pike. We've got townhouses going up on Old Arsh Road, the Bradbury Park Townhouses, additional townhouses that have been approved for twenty-two-oh-eight Old Arsh Road. And of course, the new office building that's, I think, completed behind McDonald's thirty-eighteen White Wall Road. Other development highlights, we've got the Wawa Building going up at ten-fourteen Germantown Pike.
Slowly, but it's going.
Slowly, but going up. The twenty-five-hundred DeKalb apartment complex, demolition permits have been approved.
And demolition should be complete by the end of this month.
Thank you, Mr. Sol, my assistant. Thank you. Appreciate it. And of course, DeKalb Plaza, we've had some renovations going on over there for the Chick-fil-A and the Taco Bell renovations. Programmatic highlights, Chuck Abad has mentioned about our Bootastic Drive Thru trunk and tree, but other things that have gone on in twenty-twenty-two, we're back on track with our sports programs. We've got some additional pickleball leagues that are going on at this point, beginners in advance, our bocce leagues, our kids soccer programs. We've partnered with Jump Start Sports and Crunch Fitness to provide athletic programs for kids in the township. Of course, most of you here are all familiar with the summer camp that we provide each year. Additional program highlights, we're back on track with a lot of our senior programs this year. As you can imagine, COVID twenty-twenty, you know, they kind of went by the wayside twenty-twenty-one. We started slowly building them up, but twenty-twenty-two, our Bingo Madness Mondays are back on track. Our Seniors Car Club, we're starting new in November. Our first East Norrington Lecture Series, where a member of our advisory commission will be giving a talk, a presentation on the United States infrastructure system, interstate infrastructure system. And then, of course, our senior movie matinees as well. And I'm sure everybody here knows about Consets in the Parks. We expanded those this year, I think, to our three, our Community Day, the Drive Thru Trunk or Tree, and our Holiday Tree Lightning, which is scheduled for December fifth. Thank you. So a lot of activities, finally getting back up to speed after that slowdown during the COVID years. Departmentally, there's been a lot of things that took place in twenty-twenty-two. Chief already mentioned about the new police vehicles that, that have been taken delivery of, our road construction program. You've probably noticed the ADA curb replacement program that's operating throughout the township. Our parks improvements, particularly over on Old Arsh Road, the new playground equipment was installed over there. And then, of course, our public works, the Department has been doing a number of basic solar projects throughout the township as well. And then beyond all of that, we're continuing the board's push on renewables and sustainability. So we had a number of solar charging stations installed in our parks. If you go down to Stanford Street Park, you'd notice one by the tent score, one by the playground facility, there are our phone and laptop charging stations. Our LED streetlight replacement program is just about done. I think next year, we'll have all those streetlights replaced. If you came in after dark, you'd notice the new LED lights, streetlights that are out in the administration parking lot. And of course, big this year was the board's approval at the last meeting for the fire truck, which we should be here in now twenty-three months. And then finally, as far as departmental highlights are concerned, there was a moment of assistance by township staff at the direction of the board for a number of traffic calming initiatives throughout the township, whether it be speed home speed tables, solar speed limit signs, a traffic camera that was installed on Pop Shop Road. And then we also implemented and worked on the five-year capital improvement plan in twenty-twenty-two also. So let's talk about twenty-twenty-three. So this is our budget for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three at this point in time. And I'm going to stress that because remember, this includes all of the asks for all of the departments, which is why we've got a number of funds that are out of balance between our revenues and expenditures, because the hard work starts tomorrow. We've got a total of fourteen different funds. A number of them are operating funds, daily operating funds, and then half a dozen of them are our capital funds. And that's where our five-year capital improvement plan comes into play. That's where we've got the roadmap for everything the departments want to do through twenty-twenty-seven. And that's part of what we'll be reviewing with the board when we sit down for those budget meetings. So right now, our biggest budget gap is in our general fund, right back there a little bit, nine point three million versus ten point three million. But again, one of our goals is to minimize or have no tax increase. This budget, proposed budget, is all of the asks from all of the departments. So it's not unusual and it's kind of expected to have that gap right now. But that's what we'll be working on in the next few weeks. Some of the highlights that are contained in the twenty-twenty-three budget, more traffic control and management, more park enhancements, infrastructure investments, continued emphasis on renewables and sustainability. And one key item, there's no new personnel plan for the budget at this point. So I'd be glad to answer any question, oh, sorry, with the most, one of the most important screens, our twenty-twenty-three budget challenges. Like everyone, we've got healthcare cost challenges. One of the differences here is that we're actively working on those and working One of the differences here is that we're actively working on those and working on different plans to maintain those costs and in some cases, lower those costs. So we hope to have something in 2023 to be able to present to the board to attack that. Insurance costs overall have risen, property insurance, workers' comp insurance. They have gone up dramatically in 2023. And in talking with other municipal departments, I think that's commonplace, it's happening everywhere. And the only other thing really is that we've had a lot of developments take place in the last year, year and a half, there's not as many on the horizon. So we, you know, are projecting that our permit fees will be a little bit lower in '23, '24 than they were necessarily in '22 and '21. But those are just all the pieces that go into the mix when we start working on the budget and start meeting with the board to go through it in detail. The next steps we've got, assuming there's an authorization to advertise this proposed budget, we'll have our department meetings, we'll have our November 15 budget presentation, a public meeting, and then we'll have the final one in December 13, where we'll ask for board approval for the budget. So I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have. And as I said, what we're asking for is authorization to advertise the proposed budget.
Any questions, the board, governor? Oh, you're going to have to sharpen your pencil a little bit, but I know you always do. Thank you for that presentation. We've done a lot for the township. You've done a lot to meet those goals that you showed at the beginning, and hopefully we will continue that. So I will make a motion to authorize the advertisement of this preliminary budget. And then we'll schedule the budget presentations from November 15 and December 13 of this year. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Vice Chair Wyner, on the favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries, but look.
All right. Least but not least, monthly expenditures for September 27 through October 24. Finance Director Chris to cover this matter.
Thank you, Supervisor DeSanto. So presented to the board tonight are the township expenditures for the month. More specifically, the expenditures from the day of our last board meeting to the day before this board meeting. And those expenditures totaled $1,394,979.93. Our accounts payable expenditures, those payments for utilities, supplies, and services, totaled $957,405.70. And our payroll expenditures, salaries, wages, taxes, et cetera, were $437,574.23. Township staff is asking for the board's approval of these expenditures. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions? Okay, here we go. I'll make a motion then to approve the total, about $1,394,979.93. Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by Vice Chair Wyner, on the favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries. Other business. Other business.
Wyner is okay. I'm, I'm really, I can't find him, Mr. Chairman. Thank you. Just take a second. I know Dave said there's a lot of work that starts now. I can tell you from experience and from my own knowledge, he's been working very hard on this for the last six weeks. So he's put a ton of time into it already. It's true, there's a, there's a lot more work to do, as there is every year. But I can tell you, our Finance Director Chris and all of the finance, and myself, and we understand, as the board does, and we follow the board's direction, that, you know, our residents are out there having increases done with increases in their groceries, in their insurances, and all these other areas. And we understand that there's other, from school districts to counties to everybody, that have to raise taxes for a variety of reasons. We take that very seriously and do anything we can from our perspective to keep, to make, to not add to that burden, you know? Obviously, school districts have unfunded mandates that really are out of their hands in a lot of ways. We get some of them, but not to the extent. So we take that very seriously and put a lot of time in to keep services at a high level, but try to find ways where we can do more with less. And we do that every year, and it's really an important part of our process as we go through this. So I can assure you that we already know we're in a good position for, the last time this township raised taxes was 2009. I can assure you, we will be coming to you in November and December with a no tax increase budget. We're fortunate with a lot of good financial storage ship and really squeezing every nickel when it comes to internal spending. We've been able to do that, and it's important to us, and we're going to continue to try to do that for as long as possible, because we know everyone's being pressured in so many different areas. I want to comment on the dog park. I know we have two, our two leaders here from, we have, it's a tip. I had mentioned the last meeting that Representative Bradford was working on a grant, and he worked really fast. I haven't got told for sure, but we may hear any day. Nothing happens that fast. I'm surprised, you know, a lot of things came into, came into focus quickly. A lot of discussions, far more discussions than I ever thought I'd have about dog parks. But we suspect and expect to have some pretty strong positive information as far as this grant within days. I mean, I couldn't possibly have gotten it before today, true or false? But we will, we will know more, hopefully any day. And a lot of the work that you've already done, truly, I mean, we, you know, we did some work on our own, we kind of followed your lead as well, and did some of the research, but it's all doable, we think, in a reasonable manner. Couple other things we've been working on, hospital, friends of the dog park, you know, nonprofits. So there's all those things that we can talk to the group later, but all, very positive stuff. I don't know more, I can't, I don't want to say too much more until I know we're getting this, or I don't want to get anybody too charged up. But hopefully, within the next few days, there'll be an announcement and more details. And then the work starts, honestly, to find out how we're going to do it, what we're going to do, where, you know, all those kinds of things. So stay tuned for that. And I will say, I know we discussed it earlier, the Aqua, I was going, I had mentioned that we talked about it in, in the back prior, because I had done some of the research that this gentleman mentioned, New Garden, or I think that's what it is. I had done some of that, Dave and I, I had done some of that research, that's why we brought this to you. And it's truly very important to us, because when we have legal documents that say one thing, we're going to hold, we're going to do everything in our legal power, to hold you to those legal limits you made. That being said, we have a lot of work to do, investigation, and Solicitor McKenney will be involved with that, and maybe a PUC expert. But that's, that's our goal, that's what's fair, that's what we, that's what we entered into. And our residents, and all of your residents deserve nothing less. So stay tuned for that, we hope to have more back for you on that end. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Bob, that was great. Again, you and your staff have done a tremendous job, and we saw it with your presentation about the township, and not only have we maintained the services we provide, and, but we've enhanced and avoided having a tax increase. And that's, to be, that's a feather in your cap, you know, it continues.
Mr. Chairman, I think that's important, I should have mentioned it, because I know we have the Yorks in the, in the void. I can talk to them afterwards, but we got more, more final information back from our traffic study on Stony Creek, and it's, and it's all very positive for our, you know, the stop signs that were put up temporarily, they're allowed to stay, will be allowed to stay. And then the parking thing, so we have more information for that, we'll share it with you afterwards if you have a minute. But, but very positive information, so we're hoping that for certain areas, these things really work and they got, make a difference, so stay tuned for that.
Thank you. Citizens to be heard, anybody? Anybody on the line here?
Not this year.
Okay. Well, then let's talk about a review of upcoming meeting dates. And we've already talked about some of these, we saw in Mr. Chris's presentation. For the meetings, they're on Tuesday, November 5th, which is election day. There's a felony hearing board meeting. Tuesday, November 15th is our next board of supervisors meeting here. Wednesday, November 16th is the planning commission meeting. Upcoming events, this is really a packed month coming up here, Lodge is still going a little a little bit early here. This Thursday, the 27th, I believe, is a movie matinee from 12:30 to 3:00. You need to respond, you're a local township, to make reservations, because there's limited seating. The meeting, the movie's going to be Elvis, I was told. So everybody that's an Elvis fan, I want to see that. Thursday, November 3rd, 10 to 11:30 in the morning, as Mr. Chris mentioned, we had a lot of lecture series, Histories of American Infrastructure. And again, you need to make reservations for that, because there's limited seating, because of the beginning here. Monday, November 7th, Bingo Monday Madness, is 10:30 to 12. And you need to, of course, all these things, you need to make reservations, because they get filled up quick. And Wednesday, November 9th, is the card club, 10 to AM till noon. And again, you need to sign up for that. And on Friday, November 11th, Veterans Day, the offices are closed. So that's a pretty big schedule for the week. So I want to make a motion to adjourn. Another meeting is November 15th. Will I make a motion to adjourn?
Oh, yes, sure. I'm going to make a motion. Sorry, sorry.
That's okay. Motion to adjourn is made, do I have a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by, close to your minder, on the favor?
Aye.
Close, motion carries, being adjourned.